Good morning, it's 10:00 AM and that is the time set for our regular board meeting of the Cochise County Board of Supervisors. This is August 8th, 10:00 AM. We are in the Board of Supervisors Hearing Room, 1415 Melody Lane, Building G Bisbee. Any item on this agenda is open for discussion and possible action. We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the states of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The order or deletion of any item on this agenda is subject to modification at this meeting. The Board may vote to recess into an executive session for the purpose of obtaining legal advice from the Board's attorney on any matter listed on the agenda pursuant to ARS 38-431.03A3. I will begin with the roll call, District 1.
Crosby is here.
District 2.
Supervisor English is present.
And District 3, Supervisor Judd here to represent District 3. Members of the public may attend this meeting via Microsoft Teams computer or mobile app or via phone by calling 602-609-7513 or 888-680-6714, conference ID 150899060. If you have trouble accessing this meeting remotely, call 520-432-9200 for direction. The Board may permit public comment during discussion of any item on the agenda to speak on an agenda item or during the call to the public. A form has to have been completed and returned to the clerk of the Board prior to the start of the meeting. Note that some attachments may be updated after this agenda is published. This means that some presentation materials displayed at the Board meeting may differ slightly from the attached version. We will begin with call to the public. The first one is Alfred Kern. As you approach the mic, please state your name and your address.
All right. My name's Alfred Kern, living 3460 East Green Washington Douglas. And I'm sure everybody's heard it before. So anyway, first off, I want to say to Ann English that for the past 12 years that you've been in office, I don't see you having done anything. You probably have, but you know, it hasn't come across me. So anyway, I always wanted to say too is that the money you've collected for doing county supervisor's job, as far as I'm concerned, you owe that to the county. You haven't done anything. But, very on, you still haven't done anything. You know, I've talked to you for the past 12 years and not just the last 18 months twice a month, you know, since you've been in office. I don't see, like I said, I don't see that you've done anything. So it's time to start. You've only got another little over a year to go in this election. And it was been my understanding that you're not running again, but I, and I don't know, but uh, like I said, something has to be done about our roads. The other thing that has is going on is use the resources that we have. They're tearing up Fifth Street over by the Walmart. What are they doing with all that road that they're tearing up and grinding up? They're dumping it in a hole sometimes. Put it down on the secondary roads where it's needed, not just my road, but on the, you know, use the resources that we have. You know, it's, one of the things that happens too is when they clean out a wash, they, they take that dirt and they put it behind the Border Patrol station. Wrong answer. Use it. You know, start using the resources that we have. You know, um, it, it's just gotten to the point where Cipriano, San Mateo, and Madrona.
Thank you.
Am I done?
Yes.
Okay.
The next speaker is Jeff Sturgis. He is on teams today. Mr. Sturgis.
I'm here, can you hear me?
Proceed.
Some of the latest news about our Supervisor Tom Crosby is that our State's Attorney General has had to warn him about violating the State's open meeting laws, threatening him with legal action, which could even be removal from office. I thought Republicans were supposed to be the party of law and order. I heard Supervisor Crosby being warned by a member of our county's office about breaking this law, the open meeting law, to which he replied, "I don't care." Well, it seems that the Office of our own county attorney cares, the Office of our own state Attorney General cares. Crosby has indicated that he will run for office again in 2024. Let's hope that Cochise County voters in District 1 care about the rule of law in 2024. Also, it has been eight times that an election-related lawsuit has been brought against Cochise County in about as many months. If this is a result of electing Republicans to office in Cochise County, isn't it time to think of changing things around? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sturgis. Our next speaker is Allison Morse. She is also on teams. Ms. Morse, are you there?
Can you hear me?
We can.
Thank you.
Yes.
Good morning, I'm Allison Morse from Portal, speaking on behalf of myself and 37 other residents across Cochise County. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. The million-dollar ballot fraud countermeasure grant is a sham and complete waste of taxpayers' dollars. It's an excessive solution to a non-existent problem, but one that allows former legislator Mark Finchem and recorder David Stevens to garner support for their political agendas based on debunked theories and disproven lies. With Finchem's connection to Authentix founder Olaf Halverson and Stevens' personal friendship to Finchem, all stand to benefit handsomely. The grant is written for recorders when throughout Arizona it is not the recorder's job to order ballot paper, it is that of the county's election department. It might appear that the grant was written specifically for Mr. Stevens since he was the only recorder who applied for it last fall, when he was not yet in charge of Cochise County elections. His control of elections came several months later, after our former elections director Lisa Mara was forced to resign citing a hostile and threatening workplace environment. Mr. Stevens has already spent almost 20% of the $1 million grant to pay Runbeck Election Services without Board approval and without providing proper documentation in accordance with the grant. Although this is the same company that has been printing Cochise County ballots for many years, Runbeck has not provided the required technical proposal plan, pricing proposal, or past performance and reference listing as outlined in the RFP's submission guidelines. Authentix is a global company with interests in oil and gas, pharmaceuticals, agrochemicals, currency, tax stamps, and even wines and spirits. It has zero experience with elections, save for the mock-up sample that the company created from a Cochise County ballot provided by recorder Stevens. Although Mr. Finchem has repeatedly pushed the Authentix product, it makes no sense to consider their proposal, or any proposal for that matter, because there is simply no substantial evidence of ballot fraud in Cochise County or anywhere else in Arizona. The only verifiable fraud here is the grant itself, a cleverly rigged, million-dollar offering of taxpayers' dollars to line the pockets of private industry and paranoid election skeptics masquerading as patriotic politicians. Thank you.
Thank you, Ellie. Our next speaker is Daniel LaChance.
That's fine. What's going on? There we go. Oh, I turned it down.
Just mute yourself, please. Mr. LaChance, please come forward. On deck is Kara Harris.
Sorry?
On deck is Kara Harris. Just letting her know. I'll do that for no one.
Good morning, Supervisors. I'd like to speak with you on the jail district. I look back at the law enforcement that we have back there and I want to make clear to you guys, it's not about you. I respect and uphold you. It's about corrupt and incompetent government, right here. So we filed a lawsuit, and part of that lawsuit was submitting our motion for summary judgment on the 4th of August, Friday, which is in accordance with Judge Thorne's schedule for the lawsuit. I hope you guys have taken a time to sit down and really read that and clearly go through it. It's a tour de force stunning indictment of the unlawful jail district creation and election which was conducted by the county. So you really need to go look at that. It's 19 pages. It systematically deconstructs and destroys the county for their unlawful behavior. For those folks that don't know where to go look at that, you can go look at it too. Please go. WinningElections.org. WinningElections.org. You can download it and you can read it. You can see the exhibits and the affidavits of people who were disenfranchised, who didn't get a ballot, can see the unlawful behavior of the county in disenfranchising citizens and limiting their access to vote. It's all very clearly laid out. But most importantly, Board of Supervisors, you took an oath of office to uphold and defend the Constitution of the United States and the state of Arizona, and you haven't done that in the conduct of this election. You summarily violated your oaths of office, and as a result of those violations, you need to correct this, or you need to resign, or you need to do both of those things, correct and resign. And you need to put people into the powerful positions that we assumed when we gave you this power, that you would properly represent us as our Board of Supervisors, supervise in the county, not getting in bed with the county. So we need you to do that. So now, please, go read the motion for summary judgment. I give you a couple of days to read it and then come seek compromise with us. I'm willing to do that, but time is of the essence and you're going to run out of time. So please, we can have a good outcome to this, or we can do it the mean and nasty way. I would prefer not to do it the mean and nasty way. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Kara Harris. On deck is Jennifer Druckman.
Good morning, Board and all of you in attendance. I'm Kara. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I'm Kara Harris, 2265 North Mustang Heights Road, Wichita City, Whitestone. Today I must give a ride to a disabled friend to the doctor. I'm tired of continually having to attend these meetings, not being paid, and stressed out trying to get my public servants to do their jobs. Here we go again, as I too do my best imitation of Ms. English and roll my eyes at the Board. We all know statewide about election fraud, and we the people have had enough of being fed platitudes by overbloated politicians using their job as an income and not to serve the people. I do know why they asked you to step down from the House of Representatives, Mrs. Judd. I and many know the truth about your inability to do the right thing. I also know why you took this job, and I quote you, quote, "It pays $60,000 a year," unquote. But the facts are, you work for us. You have failed to do what you said you would do about the voting system. Let me repeat with a roll of my eyes once again. Precinct voting, one-day voting, paper ballots, counting at the precinct level, election results the next day. Can it be any clearer to you? You see, Mrs. Judd, we see you constantly voting to violate our Constitution. We expect this from Mrs. English as she makes no bones about her disdain for both our Constitution and our Arizona Constitution. But you, Mrs. Judd, have been part of burdening yours and my grandchildren with an albatross of taxes with this jail district mess. Your participation in this illegal endeavor will be in the history books. Your exoneration could be a bonus to your political failures in the House and now in our county. You could be a Joan of Arc for our county, state, and yes, even our country. The question is, will you? I will quote Mr. Johnny Wilson from the meeting two weeks ago, quote, "Who is paying you off?" I will add, "Who is paying you off enough to be willing to throw your own grandchildren under the bus with the destruction of America, starting in our very own county?" You've told us numerous times you are constitutionalist, yet your actions present you as a communist. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Jennifer Druckman. Thank you, Jennifer.
Jennifer Druckman, I live in Bisbee, Arizona. I'm opposed to Agenda Item Number 11 to enter into a contract with a company called Authentix. I'm suspicious of anything that David Stevens proposes, and that's because of his conduct in the midterm election last November, when he went along with the two rogue county supervisors who wanted to initiate 100% hand count just weeks before a major election, and went to court with them and lost. For all the conspiracy theory-driven tactics, we the taxpayers are on the hook for several hundred thousand dollars in legal fees. Also, he created a bad work environment that our excellent election director was forced to resign from, and was awarded damages for the toxic and threatening work environment she had to endure on account of him. When she was here, the elections were run immaculately, and there was no voter fraud. Now that you've pushed her out, we do anticipate all sorts of strange shenanigans. This proposal to enter into an agreement with Authentix being one of them. I took a look at the technical proposal by Authentix. Under the executive summary, it said that it intended to address, quote, "legal documents meant to deceive and electoral fraud," unquote. But we haven't had fraud. Authentix proposes all sorts of techniques to prevent criminals creating fraudulent documents. When has that ever been a problem here? They discuss various technologies, including the internet, that, quote, "paved the way for criminal activity," unquote. When has this ever happened? It's only ever happened in the minds of conspiracy theorists and have all been proven to be false in court. If there's a need for such a wide-ranging overhaul to our currently well-run, well-functioning election system, why hasn't Mr. Stevens made a public presentation to the Board of Supervisors with all the details justifying the need for these changes? Authentix has no experience doing elections. They have experience in Pakistan, Egypt, Ghana, doing tax stamp contracts, but no experience in election. Also, Authentix has a connection to Mr. Finchem. For these reasons, I oppose Agenda Item Number 11. Thank you.
Our next speaker is George Moran, in person.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen, Board Supervisors. I'm here to talk to everybody. Not everybody, because I've been asked to by several of my residents, lifelong Cochise County residents, not yesterday attendance. This water bill, which Ann is quite familiar with, and I'm not sure about the county, or where's the attorney? I would like to know where the attorney's at on this summons that was filed against Ann Waters. Why is there no action being stood up for the people of Cochise County? Does anybody want to rebuttal that, or?
We don't do that in.
Okay, so you can't do nothing about it? Okay. Apparently you guys all sat here and think this water's free. Whiskey's for drinking, water's for fighting. It's been that way all my life. I'm a resident of Cochise County five generations. I fail to understand where we have any representation here, and nobody wants to stand up for what's right. We had over 2,000 petitions, signatures, and we brought them in one day, and then they were brought in the second day. Okay, if you can't do that on a petition drive, how can you vote one day with a paper ballot and come in two days later and vote in person? That would be illegal, in my opinion. I'm just a common person. I don't understand this. And I would really like somebody to address this to me personally and some of the people which I'm here to talk about today. Nobody wants to talk about it. I'm here to talk about it. Does anybody have anything to say? Even the public? Pretty upset, Ann, pretty upset. Tom, thank you. Thank you, smile all day long, because I'm really pissed. Thank you, have a nice day.
Our next speaker is Melvin Harder. And if you, I forgot to remind you to please say your name and your address when you start. And thank you, Melvin. On deck, Bob McCormick.
Melvin Harder, 2300 Lexington Drive in Sierra Vista, Arizona. I want to start first by saying I appreciate each one of you Supervisors. You are all doing an exceptional job in my mind, my thoughts, just to mention that to you. But I do want to say the county Supervisors are responsible, it seems might be, responsible to the buildings at Miracle Valley, including the famous painting on the wall. And as should be, it should be auctioned off as soon as possible. Supervisor English asked the Development Director of the auction if it would be auctioned off in a normal way, in which the director said it would. But what is the normal way? I have discovered the director states it to be by write-in offers only. However, this is not the proper procedure, simply because it hinders the county from getting its best sale. County sales across America use a different technique in which there are auctions, and it works best for county and buyer. The auctions occur on the step of the courthouse in an open bid. Whoever bids the highest amount gets the property. Other often bidders bid against each other, thus driving the price, the sale price, up even higher, meaning more money for the county. I ask the Board of Supervisors to consider my concerns, accept the same procedure as other county real estate auctions are across America. We do not adhere to the director's right in auction. I do not disrespect the director, but he's not striving to obtain the best price for all involved. Number two, I want to say, the director also does not want bidders to walk through the property. His reason, someone might get, it's a liability to the county, someone may get hurt. He simply wants the, he wants to offer potential buyers to look at his pictures of the property. I stand in opposition to his position. Think about it. Would you purchase property such as a home without a first have an opportunity to look at it? Absolutely not. I know I would not want to buy anything without the guarantee to see it. That's even mentioned by Jesus in the Holy Scriptures. I believe the Development Director promotes fear among the Board of Supervisors, who certainly do not need additional issues. I propose to the Board of Supervisors that registered bidders should have ample time to have a walkthrough prior to the auction, the sell date. A document could be presented to each bidder declaring that Cochise County will not be liable or responsible for anyone getting hurt. Last May 22, the director gave me permission, walked through the county college's campus. However, in June, he said he misspoke. He cannot let me and perhaps would not give permission. However, in October 2022, the director did give me just 20 minutes to look at the property. The buildings were all locked. I was unable to see them. This is not right. So I ask you to consider what I'm sharing with you today. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So I need to check, the next speaker is Bob McCormick, but I do need to check, Ms. Tanya Bach, you did, you did present. So you, okay, all right, thank you. I will call you next. You're on deck.
Yeah, my name is Bob McCormick and I live in Sierra Vista. I'm here to talk about election integrity. Number one, we'd like to stop this mail-in ballot only and get back to original ballots where you can vote several times, several days, but get a one-day final outcome. We want to try to get into the hand counts, 100%, no machines, machines are crooked. And, and there's no identification required, there's no chain of custody, and also stop the drop boxes. It's another place where you can cheat, stuff them. And that's about all I got to say.
Thank you. So now we have Tanya Bach. On deck, Joseph Patterson. I decided I'd try that today, so thank you for reminding me.
My name is Tanya Bach. I live at 998 North Slope Longway. I spoke at the public hearing regarding the floodplain regulation proposal, and I wanted to expand my thoughts to you here. The basis of it is that now Zones X and D, which are the entire county, will be governed by floodplain regulations and require a one-foot elevation for all buildings. This exponentially increases building costs for both commercial and residential in our county, and I fear that it will deteriorate and/or encourage development within our county and people coming to our county. I, if, I currently had a permit to build on a slab, you know, in an area where there's no risk of floodplain. My quote would be about $22,000 for the slab. If with the new changes, my foundation costs would go up to $44,000. This is all based on what, I'm sorry, let me back up. Neither of this one-foot regulation elevation is required by either FEMA or DWR in Zones X or D. So we will be a very unique area that will have this regulation. And there's a lot of confusion about why we need this elevation. So when you go to apply, when you go to get flood insurance, if you live in a flood zone, you have to elevate your home in order to qualify for insurance. Then there is this, and those, those rates are set by FEMA. Then there's the second system, the community rating system, and within that, there's 16 metrics as to how we can get a discount on flood insurance. So Ms. Watkins has said that this elevation for the entire county will get us points in this system to get an extra 5%. That 5% will save me $25 a year on my flood insurance. So it'll take me close to 700 years to make $22,000, which is what I've had to pay to elevate, even though my house isn't at risk for flooding. The example is also the flooding that happened last year in St. David. I looked at the news reports and those houses flooded to two feet. And so even if they had built to one foot, they still would have been flooded. And I'm scared that everyone building to one foot will give a false sense of security and not buy flood insurance. One of the metrics for getting the discount within the community rating systems is having more people in the community buy flood insurance. But not only that, Ms. Watkins also said that we are coming out with flood mapping studies in both this fall and in 2025, which identify the actual areas in our county that are at risk. And then those people would know, oh, I do need to build elevated in these areas. So I feel like it's a waste of money for me to build elevated in an area where I'm not at risk, instead of, I would be better off buying the flood insurance. And I don't think that the public understands that. I don't think it's been put out there very clearly to the public to comment on this or to understand it. It was actually, the proposal was taken off of the county website, and I contacted both the IT Department and the floodplain department to put it back on because the public couldn't access those documents.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Joseph Patterson, on deck, Kim DePew.
Joseph Patterson, Sierra Vista. I'd like to begin by recognizing Supervisor Crosby, who represents my district. Over the last year, I've seen Supervisor Crosby crucified over and over and over again. I, not knowing him before, over the last year, I've come to know him and respect him monumentally, actually. He's a man of integrity. He's a man of courage. He doesn't lie. And he loves the Constitution. He loves freedom. And he is willing to place himself on the line to be fired upon to protect that, regardless of what people say about it. So I would just like to take this opportunity to recognize him and thank him, and thank God that we have a Supervisor representing him, representing us of his stature. Next, I would like to say that I'm thrilled to hear that the Board is going to hold a work session next week to develop election policy. to develop election policy for future elections. We've been waiting for this for a long time. And we thank Chairman Judd for bringing this to the table, for setting up this work session. And we ask that the board use this opportunity to, uh, set policy that will bring confidence back to the election system. We've made our points over and over and over again. So I know that the supervisors know what we're looking for, what's needed. We want confidence. We want to be able to trust. Our nation is divided. It is not indivisible. We are divided and we are falling. We need unity. Election integrity, where people can trust the results regardless of what the results may be, is critical if we are to survive. Our little county can be a light in the darkness and do what needs to be done. And we ask that, we know that you know what to do. We ask that you do it. That's all I have.
Okay, Kim Depew. On deck, Paul Varble.
Good morning. Here I am again. Sorry. I noticed that that gentleman that spoke, and I was sorry he left because I wanted to compliment him. You can't turn in petitions over a two-day period in different formats, but you can vote over a, what, 30-day period in several different formats. So brilliant point. Loved it. My subject is ballots are not junk mail. Just because it's legal does not make all mail-in ballots a good idea. Secure chain of custody for ballots mailed to everyone is impossible. The Board of Supervisors should only authorize election services to the special districts that provides secure chain of custody for those ballots. This is a step you can take. Stop moving the election integrity bar down because voters are not voting. It's like the movie Raise the Bar, the voters will come. Voting is a privilege, not a chore. Communicate that. Ballots are not junk mail. Fancy paper will be treated with the same disrespect as regular paper. Ballots will go into the trash if an elector didn't request it. Ballots are not junk mail.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Paul Varble. Followed by Ann Carl.
Good morning, everybody. My name is Paul Varble, Sierra Vista. The action we are here for today is about election integrity and election interference. It has nothing to do with the sheriff's office. It's about taxation without representation, just like the Boston Tea Party. And we, the people, do not approve of, and have never approved of, and will never approve of, the use of all mail-in elections or machines for any election in Cochise County or the USA. Any law that violates constitutional laws null and void, as if it never happened in the first place, and not to be complied with. You guys became criminals when you ignored Arizona Constitution, Article Four, Part, Part One, Section One, Subparagraph Eight. You must immediately deem the jail District Null and Void. So I'm asking you guys a question. It's a yes or no question. Not talking about all kinds of other stuff, just yes or no. Here's a question. Do you believe in election integrity? You can answer. Of course, if you don't, we know that you don't believe in it. It goes on to, uh, to, um, election interference. Do you believe election interference is a crime? Yes or no? I take that as no. If election integrity was a yes, I challenge you to prove to we, the people, that you believe in election integrity by signing a petition or making a petition recalling Katie Hobbs, who vetoed election integrity, which, by the way, is a crime against the Constitution. Without election integrity and committing election interference, our internal domestic terrorist political enemies have opened all our borders to our enemies. The Biden cartel, along with Katie Hobbs, Adrian Fontes, English, and Judd. By keeping our borders open, you are complicit by condoning the child trafficking, child slavery, kidnapping, and rape, and the selling of our children. And then there's the weapons smuggling, the drug smuggling of massive amounts of fentanyl. This smuggling and all this trafficking across our borders is an invasion on America and is an act of war within the, with the intent to kill Americas. By the way, where's the missing 85,000 children? So no, we don't consent to mail-in ballots. We do not want mail-in elections, not now, not ever. We do not approve, we will not accept, and we don't condone your actions. Here's a quick solution. Finish the wall and arrest all of those who wanted it open. When voting, proof of American citizenship with a, a photo ID should be required to vote everywhere in America. One day, one vote, voter ID required, hand count, paper ballot, no machines, smaller precinct polling locations, no mail-in absentee ballots except for military or disabled, and announce the same day. And by the way, mail-in voting has been ruled unconstitutional in Pennsylvania. Thank you.
My name is Ann Carl from Bisbee. The million-dollar, highly irregular recorder grant to Mr. Stevens never smelled right. We watched him gaslight the public about problems with ballot paper, and you know this. We haven't had problems with ballot paper. We watched him gaslight Supervisor English about, and, and the public, about lawful authorization of a dandy roll, which you never gave. We watch him continue today, gaslight us about whether a request for extension after more than 30 days after a deadline is lawful. And evidence about how rotten this is keeps coming. Like Mr. Fincham's deceiving us about his already established relationship with the grant's tailor-made beneficiary. We've never bought it, any of it, nor should you. To the extent you continue to, you are accomplices to this corruption. And tell me, how is it acceptable to support a grant for corruption when it is not acceptable to support our county employees, working families, people living on a fixed income? Really? How is that not acceptable? Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes our call to the public. We'll, um, proceed with the consent agenda items, one through 10.
Madam, uh, I have a, uh, point of order. I would like to break out, number one, just prove minutes of regular meetings, but I would make a motion for, I move, we approve consent agenda items two through nine.
10, I believe. Yes, 10.
Am I mistaken?
Two through 10.
I move, we approve consent agenda items two through 10.
So you're removing the minutes?
Uh, I want to talk about the movement, the minutes, uh, in, before we approve consent agenda.
Let's have a change.
So I guess, um, Sharon's gone. That's okay. So I just wanted to talk about the, uh, minutes of the last.
Did we get a second?
Wait, there hasn't been a second.
We don't need, we don't need a second for me to break out an agenda item. Oh, you're talking about the.
Motion to approve.
Yeah, motion to approve two through 10. We need a second. I'll second that, just so we can get on with the meeting. Um, we have a motion and second for items two through 10. All those in favor say aye.
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 And the chair votes aye and the motion carries. Now we will, we have been requested to break out item number one, which is a discussion of the minutes. Mr. Crosby, what do you have for us?
I move, we approve the minutes of the regular meeting of the Board of Supervisors of July 25, 2023.
Is there a second to approve number one?
I'll, I'll second that.
Okay. Uh, is there any discussion?
Okay. Yes, I do have discussion, and this is about the, uh, topic of elections, item number five, and it is paragraph number four, and I'll just wait for that to come up. So it says, starts out, Vice Chairman Crosby stated, yada, yada, yada. Last sentence, it says, "He stressed that Chairman Judd stressed chain of custody and other matters of election integrity." And, and I want to insert, Chairman Judd stated that there was a pressing need for legal advice, because I find that sentence to be ambiguous. So, uh, Chairman Judd stated that the direction at the February 2023 work session was for individual supervisors to bring agenda items forward that they wish to address, which has not happened at a regular meeting. And, uh, going to item number six, Sharon, and paragraph about one, two, three, four, five, six. It's, uh, it starts out, Chairman Crosby reiterated, et cetera, et cetera. Chairman Judd stated that a work session was held and the supervisors were directed to bring agenda items. So, uh, a slightly more accurate quote from the July minutes video was Chairman Judd said, "Maybe I'm mistaken, but we did hold, I remember, a work session on that, and we were directed to bring in our ideas as options." The last meeting minutes, paragraph five, or, uh, par, uh, pay, item five, paragraphs four and five, Chairman Judd says, "There is a pressing need." She says, "Agenda items have not been brought forward at a regular meeting, but I did my part. I submitted an agenda item and the addenda, addendum dated 3/2023. Mr. LeChance asked me to add the county employees' ID verifier, so I did the amended addendum two dated for April 6, 23." So, uh, according to Chairman Judd, individual supervisors like me were supposed to bring agenda items forward, which I did, and she didn't. When she became chair, she no longer needed me for consensus to put something on the agenda. That concludes my remarks.
Okay. So did you propose a change to the minutes?
I would like your name, Chairman Judd, in between the words "and" and stated on item five, paragraph four.
He, he has that noted on his, you know about it?
If, if we can, Madam Chair, uh, if there's a request to amend or change the minutes, if we can table this item to the next meeting so that we can actually review the recording to see, uh, the recommendations of, of the amendment.
All right. So do we have a motion to table this till the next meeting?
I move, table agenda item number one, approve the minutes of the regular meeting of the Board of Supervisors of July 25, 2023, until our next regular meeting.
August 29.
August 29.
August 29. Sorry.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and second to table item number one. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The chair votes aye and the motion carries. All right. Now we are on item number 11. We need that to be removed from the table.
I'm sure I move that we remove, uh, item number 11 from the table.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The chair votes aye and the motion carries unanimously.
I'm sure I move that we, again, table this item until the next regular meeting, because I have not received sufficient information in order to make this decision. I think that it's out of order.
Okay. Before we call for a second on that one, um, it's been requested we have a special meeting on that item. And I would prefer that because I won't be in person on the 20, 29th. And that suggested.
Table it to.
August 22nd, special meeting, 2:30 PM.
Okay, August, I would like to, again, table this item until August the 22nd at a special meeting at 2:30 PM.
Second.
We have, um, motion and second to table this item. Um, August 22nd, special meeting, 2:30 PM in the Board of Supervisors Conference over here in the hearing room.
Question.
Okay. Yes.
What is going to be covered besides the authentics and ballot fraud countermeasures?
It's this item. It's item 11. So just as housekeeping, all of the speakers, all of those signed in, in opposition to this, will be, um, carried forward to that meeting, as has been in the past.
My tabling it doesn't change the agenda item.
That's fine.
Okay. So item number 11 is done. Special meeting, yes. Yes.
Madam Chair, you didn't vote.
There was no vote.
We did not vote. Okay. We have a motion to table this item till August 22nd, 2:30 PM, to a special meeting. And we have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The chair votes aye and the motion carries unanimously. Item number 12, approve amendment one to General Services Agreement with Humane Society and Cochise County, and I need a motion for that.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve amendment one to the General Services Agreement between Cochise County and the Humane Society of Southern Arizona for animal sheltering services as set forth in the fee schedule in attached Exhibit A, effective August the 10th, 2023 through August the 10th, 2024, not to exceed $32,000 per year.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Um, Sharon Gilman, our deputy county administrator, will present this item.
Thank you. Chairman Judd, Vice Chairman Crosby, Supervisor English. Uh, on June 8th, 2021, the board approved Resolution 2110, supporting efforts to negotiate an agreement with the Humane Society regarding county animal shelter services. Uh, then in August of 2021, this, uh, original agreement was approved and ran for about two years until this year, August 10th, 2023. Over this term, the Humane Society has transported 218 animals from the Douglas Animal Shelter to the Humane Society Shelter in Tucson for adoption. The fee schedule has not changed in this amended contract to extend the term for another year. And if the funding does exist within the county sheriff's office for this program.
Okay. Is there, well, I have a question about that. I mean, I think this is a great opportunity for, for, um, Douglas to have the assistance they need, and, and I understand that Humane Society of Southern Arizona is also, um, check, doing well checks and checking in on other, um, other county shelters at no charge to us. So I think that's neat that they're doing, they're taking on that, that responsibility. Um, there's one thing I'd like to ask about is, are they, are they only charging us for transporting county animals that were submitted from the county ACOs? Is that, can that be specifically designated? Because I think they've been moving other animals.
I think the, the, the contract does not stipulate the origin of the animal. The intent was to, uh, save an animal regardless of origin so that there would be space in the Douglas Shelter for county impounds as they come in.
All right.
Um, so I think that's a question I would put to the board, is what is the intent behind it? Is, are you looking to only save, um, county animals, although animals do travel? It's hard to say. We don't license in this county, so sometimes it's hard to know exactly the origin of, of a dog or cat if they were not properly registered prior.
That's a point well taken. But I did have a, you know, just have had some required, or some requests to, um, look into that. I don't, does any of, anyone else in the board have a thought? Would you like it to be only county-submitted animals, or does it really matter?
I think the point was, is that overcrowding was a problem for us. And, um, many people felt that the overcrowding caused more euthanasia. And so the, um, the ability for this, um, organization to pick up animals, I don't think it was my intent that they had to be on one side or the other of Washington Avenue before that we would take them. I think it was opening up space so that when animals came from, uh, animal control, there was a space to put them.
Very good. Thank you. Any comments?
Not at this time.
All right. So I, I feel like proceed with that. I'm comfortable with that. All right. So we have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The chair votes aye and the motion carries unanimously. Our next is County Treasurer, approve recommendation for abatement of war property taxes.
Madam Chair, I move, we approve the recommendation of the County Treasurer for the abatement of property taxes. Madam Chair, I move we approve the recommendation of the County Treasurer for the abatement of property taxes and interest on personal property and the removal of personal property tax liens on the treasurer's certificate of clearance number 2023-142 to 2023-156.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Thank you. So Ms. Traywick, we have you to present.
Well, good morning, Board. Yes, I'm back again. Our delightful sheriff's office is practically working themselves out of a job, because I only have about 10 or 11 this time as opposed to like the 20 or 25 that I've had in the past, up to 65 before. The total amount that we would be abating is $7,254.74. And these are all for properties that are derelict or unable to be lived in.
There any discussion? Just thank you from the board for your work and the county. All right. If there's no, here, no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The chair votes aye and the motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Okay, court administration, item number 14.
I'm sure I move that we approve the fiscal year 2023, 2024 court-appointed special advocate or CASA funding agreement as provided by the Arizona Supreme Court Administrative Office of the Courts in the amount of $132,152 and approved budget amendment of $7,069 to match the funding agreement amount, effective July 1, 2023 through June 30, 2024.
Second.
And we have a motion in a second. Ms. Rita Shipley, would you help us?
Good morning, Madam Chair and Supervisors English and Crosby. Court Administration would like to request that the board approve the fiscal year 24 court-appointed special advocate, also known as CASA Funding Agreement from the Arizona Supreme Court. This funding agreement provides wages, employee-related expenses and operating expenses for two full-time employee positions. CASA program supports, they recruit, support and train volunteers that the courts appoint to children in the court system to watch over and advocate for abused and neglected children. And also the volunteers stay with the case until it's closed and child is in a safe and permanent home. I'd be happy to answer any questions that the board would have at this time regarding the CASA program.
No question, just a comment. You're always looking for volunteers.
Yes.
So if there are people who really like public service, this is the one way that you could help people in need. So check into CASA.
Ms. Shipley, are these positions, these two positions, are they filled currently?
Yes, they are. It's actually comprised of a halftime director, one full coordinator, and then we have a halftime support position, and they actively go out and recruit volunteers, help them with the training, and they also do a lot of work with the Department of Child Services and help those children that are also in both systems, both the foster care system and the criminal justice system.
I hope that turns out to be as rewarding as I'm sure it is challenging.
Yeah, it has been for them. They're very impressed with what they do.
Having served as a foster parent, I can see the, when I learned about CASA, I thought, oh my goodness, I wish that existed, because we were trying to act a little bit as that, and that was not in our, that was not in our training or job preview, but we ended up being brought in. So another thing to add to Ms. English, I hear one of your positions is to go out and recruit. So everyone else who could, everyone who, who heard that now can think of your organizations and places that she can come speak, because I have been at meetings where, where she spoke and, and it was really important to bring her into your organizations.
Yeah, the director does go out in pretty much any type of environment, trying to recruit volunteers, speaking about the program. And it's, I've had the opportunity to go up to the administrative office of the courts up in Phoenix and watch them do training for these volunteers, and it's a very intensive training. And a little, it's heartbreaking as well, but they do wonderful work.
Thank you. Well, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Chair votes aye and the motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Shipley. Our next is item number 15, if we could have a motion.
Madam Chair, I move we approve grant agreement 3-04-0013-017-2023 with the Federal Aviation Administration for the design to reconstruct runway 17/35 at the Bisbee Douglas International Airport in the amount of $378,390, effective upon signature until the final post-completion inspection certification is issued.
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion in a second. Our, this, our deputy county administrator, Sharon Gilman, will speak on this one.
Thank you. This grant is an agreement with the FAA for design services to reconstruct the main runway, main runway 1735 at BDI for $378,390. After design, another grant will come before the board for construction, and that'll be for your approval after we complete the design. No cash match is required for this project.
Is there any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 The chair votes aye and the motion carries unanimously. Item number 16.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve 144 environmental health fee waivers, totaling $25,900 to be paid from the American Rescue Plan or ARPA funds.
Okay, Juan Frisby, our budget manager, will present.
Madam Chair, members of the board, this was approved in fiscal year 22. So these transfer of funds is for fiscal year 23, which will affect last year. And the total is 144 health fee waivers and a total of $25,900 from ARPA to general fund.
Are there any questions on that?
I have a comment. I would just note that it doesn't escape my attention that the Health Department has continued to raise fees and has also had the approval of my colleagues, although I have not approved them.
I, I think in, I need to say that the Health Department recommended to us that if we wanted to cover more of the cost, because we're only trying to cover the cost, and we still haven't reached that yet. So it is a responsibility of ours in order to, when it's possible, to have the person who is benefiting pay the freight. So I, I think that that is something that we'll continue to look at. People want to feel safe when they go into a restaurant, that it's been monitored and that the food is safe. They want to know that when the septic tanks are put in, that they're put in properly, so that they won't back up on them. So I think these services that we offer are very beneficial to the public, but more beneficial to the person who's asking. And, and so therefore, that's why I suggest that we keep looking at the, at the fees, and whenever possible, we can have a fee waiver. As we had money coming from the federal government, we as a board decided that was a good place to put it, to help those people through the pandemic slump and, and help them to pay the, the health fees that were required.
I understand that, Madam, Madam English, and my point is just that you are basically subsidizing the Health Department with fees that are not with money, this, not just this $25,900, but whichever, whatever grants come in subsequently. And in my opinion, all subsidies raise the price of the product that they subsidize.
I happen to be very excited about this, because the people that own businesses and that have to apply for these permits and pay these fees are actually getting the money direct, indirectly. They are not having to pay the fee. So I feel like what, regardless of what the cost is, which wasn't really on this agenda item, that this program, we were lucky to have this program at this time, and it was applied fairly and, and perfectly to people that needed it to help them out in a, a difficult time. So anyway, any more comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 The chair votes aye and the motion carries unanimously. Human Resources, item number 17, need a motion.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve Nationwide Retirement Solutions Participating Employer Addendum, broadening the deferred compensation plans for public safety personnel retirement system, members with the addition of a 457B plan specifically for public safety employees.
Second.
All right, ma'am, motion in a second. Jennifer Graham, our new HR director. Thank you. Well, not so new anymore.
Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the board. For your consideration today is adoption of this addendum to Cochise County's agreement with Nationwide Retirement Solutions. And this establishes a supplemental salary deferral program, or known as SSDP, specifically for the members of public safety personnel. This includes members of PSPRS Corp. and EORP. And historically, these members contributed to a 457 plan, which was established for Arizona State Retirement Members. However, in September of 2022, SB 1083 was signed by Governor Ducey with a goal of delineation between public safety and civilian employee retirement plans. And so Nationwide has established this 457 specifically for public safety. And approval of this addendum allows them to participate in this plan. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have in regards to this.
Just for members of the public, Ms. Graham, in what sense is the retirement system administered by the state?
As far as the 457 plan or?
The whole thing.
Okay, I will do my debt best.
I know, that's probably a big, big question. I, like I said, just for the members of the public and whatever you have to say, increase our knowledge, and I appreciate it very much.
But of course, sir, I will, as I said, do my best. Individuals that are members of the Arizona State Retirement System, which includes civilians such as myself and individuals that are public safety or elected officials, they must participate in one of these plans by state law. And that is determined by the number of hours that an individual employee works per week. And therefore, anyone who is full-time with Cochise County is required to participate. So we have the retirement system portion that is managed by Arizona State Retirement System and Public Safety Personnel Retirement System. And employees also have the option to participate in a deferred compensation plan as somewhat of a third leg of the stool for their retirement. And so these plans through Nationwide Retirement Solutions serve as, and they have been selected by Arizona State Retirement Systems to allow our employees to have a 457 plan or a 403 plan, I believe it is, or 1. They're somewhat like the 401Ks in private sectors, but they are specifically for public sector. And so clearly Governor Ducey desired there to be a delineation between deferred compensation plans for civilians and public safety, and that's what is presented to you today.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Graham, for that thorough explanation.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Is there any comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The chair votes aye and the motion carries unanimously. The item number 19 is our state and federal legislation, and I'm guessing there'll be nods of no.
Madam Chair, there's 18.
Oh, 18. Oh, it was you, and I thought we were on that one. Okay, item number 18.
Chair, I move we approve new human resources policy 2236, leave of absence without pay as written in the attachment effective August 8, 2023.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, we have another explanation by Ms. Graham.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The policy before you today, 2236, leave of absence without pay, establishes guidelines for this form of leave that currently is used as it is in practice. However, there is nothing documented in policy, so that's exactly what this policy does. It provides employees and their supervisors guidance on how to request a leave of absence without pay, as well as sets limits on the length of time that approval can be made at the department level. A leave of absence without pay greater than two pay periods would require approval of county administration. In addition, this policy addresses how benefits are handled during such a leave. And prior to bringing this before you, it was presented to department heads and elected officials, as well as all employees, were given an opportunity to review this policy and provide their feedback. Amendments were made as a result of that feedback and is greatly appreciated. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have in regards to this.
Just a comment. I think it's always important when our, your department comes up with really good guidance, so that people always feel like that everyone is treated the same according to our policy. And when no policy exists, then there's always that nebulous like, well, I'm not sure, you know, who do I have to go to? And so I know it makes the, the book bigger, but you know, when people have a problem, at least you can show them where in the book to find the information. So thank you for bringing it to us.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. All right. Any other comments?
Madam Supervisor, forgive me.
That's okay. All those in favor say aye.
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 The chair votes aye and the motion carries.
Thank you.
Now we will go to item number 19, which is discussion impossible action regarding state and federal legislative matters. And usually we do not have a comment on this one. There's not, legislature, legislature is not in session. So any comments? Hearing none, we'll move on to our report by Richard Karwaczka, our county administrator.
I have nothing to report as of today.
I have a question for Mr. Karwaczka regarding agenda items that, well, number one that we talked about today. And that is, has to do with whether or not we had a work session that Madam Judd referred to. Maybe I'm mistaken, but we did hold, I remember, a work session on the election integrity and so on. So while you're looking at the, the tapes to see if, if indeed the correction that I suggested be made with item five, I would also like to know what happened to my agenda item that I submitted twice, once on once on 3/2023 and one on 4/623. I know that we have changed clerk since then, but I'm interested in that agenda item still, even though it has not been recognized.
So just for reference, the agenda item is for me to speak on current events. We can have conversations, you can off in the record, but that's not an opportunity to request the conversation. And this goes for all board members. So when we have an agenda item where it says, report by the county administrator for recent impending county manners, it's not a, an opportunity for the board to have a discussion with the county administrators, simply just a report. So, but I have listened to your comments and we can talk further after the board meet.
All right, now we have summary of current events. Supervisor Crosby.
Yes, indeed. Well, you know, I could just repeat what I just said, but I don't think that's probably necessary. But I do want to know if indeed we had the aforementioned work session that you.
Is that a current agenda?
Yeah, we just talked about it, and it was part of the minutes left.
In April. Okay, go ahead. Anything happening in your district? Exciting?
Well, you know, I just want to get this election integrity stuff squared away, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Ms. English.
I, I think it's important for the board to hear that the A.DOT contractor that is scoping out the road for the new commercial port had another public meeting in Douglas. scoping out the road for the new commercial port had another public meeting in Douglas. It will be six months before they make their recommendations, but for the public's information, they had two routes, three routes actually going into the port. And I I questioned why. And I was told that when you have a state contract with A dot, you have to present three options. So we'll see where it goes. There's one straight in, there's one that adds another mile and a half to it. There's one that kind of zigzags around. So I just wanted you to know that in six months, this contractor will come up with a preferred, yeah, a preferred route into the port, which will probably be the straight down James Ranch Road.
Wow, good. All right, then we did have a have something at the Buffalo Soldier.
Yes, the Naco celebration of the Buffalo Soldier. It will continue for years now that the money has been available. And it is being worked on all the time. They want the public to be able to use the Naco site and so they are, they are planning on it being a public event place. So if you haven't been there, you know, make every effort to sometime in the future to try and check into Naco because even local people many times did not know it existed. So now's your chance.
All right, I don't have anything specific about my district, so just like to adjourn this meeting. Well, first after I tell you, our next board meeting is today at one P M. in the executive conference room for a work session regarding public works update. So now I will adjourn this meeting. Thank you.